Yeah. That's what I'm thinking. We're going to come. Oh. But I think. You. It was one of these. So just more. You think the. For example, in the island of Las. But then you can come to the. I'm writing some kind of. So. This should also. Right. We have a few of them on. So. We should. Should be able to still. Very much. All right. That's what I think about it. Was that it's very little. But they're going to shut us in. Because I think it's been nice. Okay. No, we didn't see them on the. I was trying to send that. I'm here with some. So. We don't. Feel the. We do all this. And they did not just move down. But it's here. We don't want to get lost. They're going to do. She doesn't want to. She let you listen. You're right. The brackets over. You want to stand. Really? Except for all of them. I've been waiting for you. Man. So. So. That are. Well, I'm very. Uh. It's round. I'm a woman. Yeah. That's right. Need. And then. Okay. Did you look for it? Can I go to five? Five. Of her. Yeah. So I haven't. I don't really. But. No, I think neither. But if I understand, maybe you can give them a moment. But. Um. Yeah, I need to. And now there's a wrong. Well, I wouldn't say. I wouldn't be certain. They have to. Well, this is about a career. Yeah. It wasn't wrong. No, I didn't find. Very bad. I couldn't hear. Where. You needed. I was. So. Wait. Maybe. I'm on. To. But. Now, one person. How was that up there? And how was it held at one thirty seven? He did. We have. Uh. Yes. Very close. Then I. The one we're not into. Then. I didn't love something. Right here. We're fine. Right. Well, not a whole. Yes. Oh. I'm. So. I'm going to put. I'm going to watch. I guess this. Yeah. Yeah. That's right. They do. Wasn't that. It's. Certainly, it is probably. This problem is. It's not that one. For. A month. What we have. Definitely. Not well. Over. Yes. Now, it's not forty two. Here's. Okay. We're really. I know. So. Very. So. Is the one. It's a church. In. This is the possibility. This is a. Your. My whole story. Like. You guys are. People get a lot. Never got it. I'm trying to. It is. So. There are both grounds. And she's selling. Saying that. She can get people. Hello. Everyone. Spread. I want. I will show some. There is. Well, she was. I don't. Oh. I. I don't. There are no. Any of the kids. Home. You need. I'm.
Leaving, everybody?
How are you?
Quiet. Quiet night tonight?
So far. It's early.
Never know what's going to happen, right?
Yeah. Well, I think. There are always. And then. Marilyn. Yeah. Or. It's probably. Why? We think that. This case. They do. You must. But. Try. How? A lot. Really? I was like. That's. So. It's. They. They said. There's some people. Project. He's got a lot. He murders. A lot. And. We got. A spare. Well. I wanted to drive it out. Well, if you don't. Hey. From suicide. Us. To. Here. That. And all. I really. Very. The. Didn't got. People. On there. Oh. That's. Be. Yeah. I'm not. Not. That's fine. Right. Well, you know. He's. He's right. Oh. There. Whatever. I don't want to be. On a. Day. Everyone. For anything. When he's. At the bottom. Always doing. But. It's. Something. You know. That is. Part of. It's. It's a. Always. Be ready. Understand. That. Branding. Yeah. They got. Can I? Start. Water. I agree. Let's. Do. Change it from. One of these. Things. In the evening. It's. I've been. Down. Yeah. Well. Well. Great. So. Well. Greg. Is that on? Break. Why? I don't. That is not really. A part of. The park. It's. And. That. Not. Not. Right. And this. Human. That's. Right. I think. Hey, baby. It's. Oh. I'm. Right. She's got. One. Waiting for something? We're waiting for our. When I have to. To come online. The mayor. Well. Nothing. Who? See. So. The. Their. They all. Perfect. Have. On. The. Class. This. So. The fire. Very. Quite. That. Very. System. So. I'm. Good. A little. Player. I'm. Trying to. Believe. Now. 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 It's. Soon. We're. Going. To. Think. And. You have. There's a lot. Of people. Who's not. Very. Hey. That would be. Hey. Just. Point. Who are you? Margot says. Yeah. What she does. Out. The inside. We'll. Wait. Yeah. You mean. Start. Thank you. I'd appreciate it. Can you say? Wake me up. And. You're still waiting on some. Sure. Got there. And they were. They haven't. Shook. They. They. It's. On that one. I. She. Right. Here. So. Search. You with. Your. She. Needs. Wow. That's. It's. Give her. The. Sensational. For. I. Could. You want. My. I'm.
Okay, we will call to order. The September meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I understand we are having some technical difficulties, but we're going to go ahead and proceed. With. Our single item that we have on the agenda. Anyway, new business, single new business item. First of all, we have approval of the minutes from our August meeting. There was a copy in your packet. Chance to let them over. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Have support? Sure. Okay. All in favor, I?
I.
Okay. Those minutes accepted. All right. Our one new business item. Is for one thirty five North McKenzie Street. Uh. Dimensional. Variance. And we had in our packet. And Jeremiah, why don't you kind of give us? Because our applicant. Was going to try and be online and evidently there might be some problems, so we're going to kind of proceed and. Go from there. So what can you tell us? And.
So we've been working with them for a little while now. The. Garage is in the same spot as the previous one. The applicant let me know there's a. Pole on the other. I'm trying to give her reasoning that she gave to me since she can't get in. There's a. Hmm. Oh, I thought you were jumping in. There's a telephone pole or electric pole on the other side of the garage, which is why she says that they can't. They couldn't move it that way. She did use the same spot. When the building official had gone out there for some other reason, he had measured that and found it to be nine feet. The ordinance asks for ten feet. Looking through the building and the fire code, we couldn't find any reason. For that, other than just our ordinance calls for it to be ten feet.
That's enough.
Did they apply for a? Permit?
Well, I believe that's why Tony went out there was because they did not apply for a building permit.
Have they applied for?
They have since, yes.
Okay.
And what about as far as like inspection of the building, anything like that? Or will that take place? If we grant this, they'll inspect afterwards, make sure it has proper footings and all that?
It's been inspected in that way. The only thing that he's found is that it doesn't meet the ten feet.
Okay.
Requirement. We've spoken with the landlord and she's fixing up that house for the rental that she's selling. But other than that. I don't believe unless Tony said something to Greg that there was any other issues with the garage as it stands.
It's not a fire safety.
Not. Not code wise that I can find at all. It's just a ten foot, which i- is. From what I understand, a. Normal thing for every city to use as a ten foot distance. It may cause their insurance to go up possibly.
It's a. It's a. Ten between the principal building.
Yeah. Okay. One accessory.
Okay.
Ten foot. We do that with pools. And all of. All of our accessory buildings.
Exactly.
Sheds are ten feet.
Oh.
Don't. You don't want to go down that road.
And it's also been there since the twenties. Yes. Yeah.
So we. We've looked at it. We measured it. I believe it's. Nine feet and an inch from the house. So it's. You know, basically a foot variance is what they're requesting. She's been very compliant with everything I've asked her to do and turned it in. But obviously, she's not here to really speak. To the reasoning. I can only tell you what she told me.
Maybe the mayor has joined us?
Maybe.
The mayor is being quiet if she's joined us, or?
I. Yes, I. I'm here. And there was an issue. I'm wondering if she didn't show. I was planning to do it Zoom because there was a. One thing was saying one thing, a different ID number, and I couldn't get in. I've been trying for a while. So just as a heads up.
Yeah, that's. That's why we decided to go ahead and kind of pursue this because I think we pretty much had all the information we needed. So normally, we don't do that, but because of that problem, we're just going to go ahead and proceed through and. As if she was here.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions?
I'm actually okay with this moving forward. I wish the petition was here because I would like to give whoever it is a little grief about not having a permit, but.
I think that we can say we've given her quite a bit. Pulling up permit.
Take care of that.
Yeah, so I think. I think we've done that quite a bit.
Okay.
You. Turn your mic on if we are still being.
She would. She would either have to tear it down or remove one foot or.
Yeah.
Attach a breezeway or there. There's.
You can have a breezeway.
A breezeway makes it connectable, but it does not.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
I would just say that's kind of the odd. Thing about this. I mean. I mean. I think historically, these sort of requirements were based on fire separation, but. There's nothing about that in the construction code anymore. And like Jeremy said. You could attach it to the house and then it would be conforming. Right? But big. Because it's detached, there's ten feet required, which is sort of odd.
That is very odd.
Any other questions? Before we proceed through?
If it was attached, there would have been different building codes because there would have have to been a firewall between the garage and the principal residence probably. Just. As a side comment.
From. From what I've talked with Tony, I don't know if he requires a. I mean, he probably would just.
For.
For.
Yeah.
You know, to have it, but.
Mm hmm. But neither here nor there.
Yeah, I mean, I think. I think that's. Probably true. You know, and that would be. You know, if there were something in the. In the construction code that really said that, and we asked Tony about this and he said there is not. You know, then. The solution would be to. To require that as a condition that there be.
Yeah.
A one hour rated.
Yeah.
Assembly on the. The house side, but it appears that there is no longer such a requirement in the code.
Never mind.
Hey, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll proceed down through our finding of fact. One, that these practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships will prevent carrying out the strict letter of this ordinance. These hardships or difficulties shall not be deemed economic. But shall be evaluated on the terms. In the terms of the use of parcel land. Uh. This, like I said, has two homes. Rear house cannot meet the rear setback. And they also talked about the. Power pole that was in there, so that would create a problem. So I would find yes for one. Two, the genuine hardship exists because of unique circumstances. Conditions narrowness, shallness, biography of the property, vow. Intended use of property not generally apply to other property uses, the same zone. District and shall not be recurrent in nature. Uh. Once again, this is. You know, we're looking more at a setback thing. I'm not sure, quite sure whether that's. You know. The use of the property, is it changing at all? So. So like it says, there's nothing unique about this. Back, there are two houses located. Uh. relatively close to each other. Garage is probably. An advantage to the occupant. Of the other house as it gives more space, so find yes for that. Three, the hardship or special circuit conditions or circumstances not result from actions of the applicant. Well, once again, we go back to the permit. Thing. And. They.
That was tough to answer.
Yeah, it is. It's tough. And when we've had these before, we've always tried to treat them from the aspect of. If they were applying for permit all the way up front, how would we treat it? Not trying to treat it any differently, so. Yes, they didn't apply, but would we treat the. The variance any differently? No, so I would find yes for number three. Four, the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose intended disorderment, so will not. Cause a substantial adverse effect upon surrounding property, property values and the use. And enjoyment of the property in a neighborhood or district. This garage has been there. It's not going to affect anyone else's property value. When you can look at that and say that it's nine feet, one inch and not ten feet, then I guess you're pretty talented. So. I'm finding yes for number four.
And excuse me, we didn't hear anything from the neighbors.
No. There. No, I said.
That grain, the variance will not confer the applicant any special privileges that. Is deemed by this ordinance, other. It's going to be denied. By this ordinance to other lands, structures, buildings in the same district. The applicant is requesting a variance. Anyone else could also request a variance and everyone would be looked at on an individual basis. So. Yeah. We find yes for number five. Number six, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome the inequality. Inherent to the particular property. Or mitigate the hardship. Obviously, this variance is the minimum because it's already. Request. Various requests in the minimum because it's already built, so they can't make any changes on that. And it is in the same location as the former garage was, so. Would find yes for number six. And number seven, the variance shall permit establishment within the district or to use. Which are right within the zoning district or any use for which a special use permit is temporary use permits required. This is a variance, it's not a use request, so we'd find. Affirmative for number seven. So based on those findings, unless there's a difference of opinion from anyone. We are able to look at if we will grant the variance or not.
Oh. See if that's.
Okay. Uh. Anybody in the audience or anybody online wants to speak to this? Hearing none?
Yes.
Commissioners? Questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would vote. But I would move for approval of the variance and adopt. Adoption of the resolution as provided by staff.
Support.
We have a motion of support for variance as written, which is basically a one foot variance. Any questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Jakovitz?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Kolaszki?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Motion passed five zero.
Right, so they have the variance, the garage shall stand, it will not be torn down. And life goes on. Uh, anything else to come before us? Anything from the audience? I know you're all out there actually wanting to enlighten us on something?
No?
iPhone person up there is actually our applicant or not. And being that she's from another state, and you said that she is a senior citizen, she's probably freaking out. Because she couldn't get online tonight. And can we, is there any way that you could reach out to her this evening or first thing tomorrow? And let her know that everything went well?
I see the person on the iPhone is unmuted. Is there something you wanted to say?
Um, I actually live on the back property. She's having trouble getting online and I can tell her that everything went okay. She's trying to call me now.
Okay, very good. It was all approved.
Alright, perfect. Thank you guys so much.
But anything else? Anything else? Okay, hearing none. We are adjourned and planning. You can-
Start in ten minutes.
Start in ten minutes and plan your little hearts out.
Folks, we will call to order the September thirteenth regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Um, first item on our agenda is roll call.
Sir. Uh, Jakovitz?
Here.
Love?
Present.
Wetherby?
Here.
Johnson? Watson?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Present.
Cotton?
Cotton will be here.
Roberts?
Here.
All commission members present except for Chris to cut.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the August second minutes. Commissioners, I presume you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Um, I would note two corrections that I noted. Um, one is under the approval of minutes. It says there were three correction that should be plural, three corrections. And also under public comments, I believe that was leftover from the July meeting and that should simply say none. Were there any other corrections to the August minutes? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Support.
All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? August minutes are approved. Uh, next item on our agenda is case number twenty-two twenty-eight. Um, warehouse district rezoning. Folks, as you may recall from our July meeting, um, we discussed this. As based on our, our, um, re- reasonably new, um, comprehensive plan, we're going to eliminate the warehouse district. And change this all to I one light industrial district. Jeremiah has provided, uh, language changes for that. Jeremiah, do you have any comments on that or anything you want to say about it?
Um, no, other than this first case is the rezonings of those districts and then the second one. Is going to be the ordinance amendment for I two moving, uh, warehouse into that. In the next meeting, I will have another ordinance amendment in front of you to completely remove the warehouse district article from the ordinance.
Okay, so what we're looking at right now is a, is a change in zoning for the properties that are currently zoned warehouse.
Yes, and then right after that will be your-
Okay, changing language.
Changing language.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, any discussion on that? This, we, we discussed this in, in some depth last month, probably even the month before that. Is there anybody in the audience, either in person or online, that would like to address the planning commission on these rezoning matters? If this was a request from an individual property owner, I would normally go through the, the criteria that we use for rezoning, but since this is one instigated by the planning commission. And is consistent with our comprehensive plan, uh, I will not necessarily do that. Um.
Support.
We have motion and support. For the rezoning of the properties listed on the agenda. And the motion is for the adoption of the resolution as provided by staff. Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Commissioners, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and we have support for the motion. I asked them.
Did you?
Yep. We already did that.
Okay, uh, Roberts?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wetherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Jakovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Passing names.
Thank you. Next item. As Jeremiah pointed out, is the case number twenty-two twenty-nine, which is the ordinance amendment relative to the I two industrial district. Commissioners, you have a copy of the proposed changes. The proposed changes are shown in red. So again, any comment on that?
Yeah, so some things like you'll see on the second one, I've moved a few things so the language makes a bit more sense instead of just copying and pasting over the warehouse one. Um, you know, I changed the language for the public utility uses that warehouse said, so that's why that one's red. Um, got rid of number six because it's stated farther down, so I figured I might as well just get rid of that one. Um, and the rest of it is the same. For that, for the, um, permitted uses, and then starting in twenty-four, you see the, um, zoning exception uses. I removed tavern as we had spoken about because we didn't really find that that needed to be there. Um, we also-
Yeah, I read about arcade out of there as well.
Yep.
Adult uses.
So that you won't see that one on there because it's not necessarily a proposed addition, but tavern is crossed out just so you can see it's going to say category and stuff.
Yep.
And so those are the only changes.
I should point out that both of these, both the prior, both the prior, the, uh, rezoning change and this ordinance amendment. Our action is in the form of a recommendation to the city commission and is not final until they do so. Commissioners, any additional discussion on the ordinance amendment to the industrial district?
Move to approve.
Support.
A little motion and support for adoption. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commissions? On the proposed changes to the industrial district ordinance? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Watson?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Roberts?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Jakovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Wetherby?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Case number twenty-two thirty-one has been withdrawn. Oh. I'm wondering where he was. Um, going on to twenty-two thirty-three, thirteen seventy-six Division Street. Zoning exception permit in a retail strip mall with a drive-through. Is there someone present to address the planning commission on this matter?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Why did that twenty-two thirty-one get withdrawn?
Um, they couldn't meet the criteria.
Okay. I was gonna say the parking.
They couldn't, they didn't meet or couldn't meet. One was parking, which they could conceivably about. The other one is that it needed to be owner occupant.
Oh.
Oh, right.
No, that kind of killed it right there.
Okay, I wondered on the parking. That's, I just wanted.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. So, oh.
Did you say twenty-two thirty-three?
That was case number twenty-two thirty-one, excuse me. The one we're just about ready to start on is twenty-two thirty-three.
But you described something that sounded different than-
That's the case number, not the address.
That's not an address.
That's not an address, it's the case number.
Right, right.
They're coming up soon.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll get there in a few minutes. You're here for Beecher Street, I presume. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be there in a few minutes. So we are on case number twenty-two thirty-three, thirteen seventy-six Division Street. A zoning exception permit in a retail strip mall with a drive-through. This is the, uh, Meyer Outlet between Myers Gas Station and JR's Restaurant. Sir, if you are the representative of that organization, if you'd step forward, give us your name.
Todd Quatro. Todd Quatro.
Mr. Quatro, if you would give us the thumbnail sketch of what it is you're proposing to do.
Uh, basically, it's a retail strip mall in the, uh, outlet at Myers. And we have a couple of drive-through restaurants, at least one on one side. With a drive-through and retail facility to be determined.
Now, I-
It's being constructed right over, just, just outside, ne- next to the gas station, just outside the detention lot.
So actually, we'll be taking up some of Myers parking. What if Myers certainly had-
Yeah, right, inside the parking lot.
Okay, this is all a separate lot.
Total separate lot. We're separating it, uh, with a, um, with a green belt going across the front, little, uh, curb, ten-foot wide green area. Entryway on the side. Detention is basically coming through there. It's going to be shared between the two. So there's no real impact on the detention system as it sits now. Um, if anything, there's a little more landscaping being added to the parking lot as an overall.
Okay, you mentioned more than one restaurant. It will only be one drive-through.
There's one drive-through, yeah.
One drive-through regardless of how, who the occupants of the other unit.
Right, that's indicated on the plans.
Okay, okay. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Quatro? Jeremiah, do you have any comments, staff comments on this, the? The, any open, are there any open issues?
No, the only issue, and I, and I spoke to them, was, um, utilities will be reaching out to them because they need a second interceptor. That's just something they require for Greece, so. Not really something that should affect you guys in any way, but it's just something you should be aware of.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Taylor?
So I know you're looking at some of your parking requirements by using the Meyer parking lot?
Yes.
Is that, you have to have permission from Meyer? Do you, do you already have that or?
Yeah, the actual, the actual purchase, uh, per parcel was purchased from Myers.
Right.
So that area is just outside their parking and Myers has access parking inside their lot. Uh, the, we talked with Jeremiah a little bit about stacker requirements and some of the other things.
Yeah, they, they have a whole sheet of agreements with Myers.
Okay, okay. So you do have, you have agreements with Myers for-
Yeah, that's all part of the plans. On the back sheet, you'll see a lot of it's already spelled out. There's a lot of detail on it. And a lot of cross-access easement between, there's a storm sewer, cross-access, the cross-access. Or cross easement for the storm sewer for both of them to use. And then, of course, for vehi- vehicular mobility around the site, there's a lot of cross-access easements between the two. So everything can maneuver properly. So it's, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty intense as far as the legalities go, but everything, we tried to incorporate it all into the documents herself.
I know I got lost going through that.
Yeah, me too. Don't feel lost.
Other questions for Mr. Quatro?
I, I do, and I, I'm not exactly sure if this is a question for you or if it's just something that we need to be aware of, but the light that comes out by JR's there to Lowe's. Uh, there's no light, I'm sorry, the stop sign.
The lack of a light.
The lack of a light right there to me is a concern if we, and if we are adding more traffic flow to this particular area. Is that something we need to be thinking about or aware of? Because I, I use that, that outlet right there, that out, whatever, to get out of Meyer. Um, and it's challenging many days.
We may wish to ask our own engineering department to take a look at that.
But it's so close to two twenty-three, I don't know that we could do anything anyway.
Yeah.
But that, that's, that would be my only concern. Not that it's going to stop. I mean, I don't want to stop anything, but I, I do raise it as a concern that, that additional traffic.
I've waited a long, I've waited behind four cars there on occasion, waiting to, to get out, yeah. Sometimes, that's true.
And there are times where I don't, I choose to go a different way.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the, uh, on the proposal? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on either the zoning exception permit for this use or on the site plan review? Anybody online? Hey? Folks, uh, like I said, this is both a, um, zoning exception permit and a site plan review at the same time. Uh, staff has reviewed this, as Jeremiah pointed out, uh, the applicant has, uh, addressed all of the concerns, uh, that we need to be concerned with. And if we so chose, we could, we could approve this and adopt the resolution that staff has provided.
Move to approve the resolution.
Support.
Motion and support. Is there any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Support.
Roberts?
Support.
Jakovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Wetherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Watson?
Or-
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, there we go. Next item on our agenda is case twenty-two thirty-five, child daycare definition update. As I understand it, the state has changed the, uh, the definition of what a child, a, a family and group daycare definitions. Uh, and we need to have our ordinance be compliant with that. Um, Jeremiah, any additional explanation or comment on this?
The, yeah, so the state changed it from, um, it used to be six.
Now it's seven?
Now it's seven, so we don't have any control of homes that do that. The state controls that. Anything eight and over, we do have zoning exception, um, powers over that, so this is just changing the definition because when you look at, um, uh, residential ordinances, you do see that we allow, um, group daycare homes is what the name, we call it. Um, those are allowed in there, but it's the definition that we need to look at. So this is just a, an ordinance change to the definition.
So is group daycare home not the term used by the state?
So group home provider is what the state uses. We use group daycare homes. And we use family daycare homes and they use family home provider, so it just seems like it's providers, the, the difference.
I wonder if we should change the title to be consistent with theirs.
Cause my only thing is, is, is there a way instead of, and I've said this before for other things, to just put the definitions instead of going back and changing this whenever the state changes it, of putting it as defined by the state?
Like we did with ADA.
Like, like we're gonna talk about later, just so that this doesn't have to keep being pulled out and pulled out. And who knows what's gonna change one and then you don't have to worry about it.
The, the suggestion, not to, not to mansplain where you're there, but, but, but the suggestion is maybe twofold, one that we use the same terminology that the state uses and we make reference to the state rules rather than even specifying it enough.
Right, if, yeah, i- if you just reference as provided for in the statute, then you don't have to go back every time they want to change the number.
Yeah.
And I think that would be a better approach.
Is that?
Yeah, especially if, if, if we're not gonna do less and stay with the state statute, I think that, that's-
Well, in fact, we can't do less.
Well, there, there you go.
Obligated to do whatever.
If you're gonna get it more.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be we conduct the public hearing and then table it and I'll bring you language for next meeting, which is in two weeks. So I, I've noticed, or October, maybe it's three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah, it's short.
October fourth.
Yeah, it's not too far away. Um, but if we can, if we conduct the public hearing and then table it, I don't have to renotice it. I can get you new language and then we can move on from there.
I moved a table. Support.
Wait, just a minute, just a minute. Is there anyone in the audience or online that wishes to comment on that, on this, on this proposed change to the ordinance? Again, this would be in the form of rec, or any change we make would be in the form of a recommendation to the city commission. Hearing no comments either from room or from online?
I moved a table. Support.
We have motion and support to table this until-
Our next meeting.
Until our next meeting and we have language from staff. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item on our agenda is case number twenty-two thirty-six nine thirty-three West Beecher, a mini warehouse proposal. There we go.
Well, I, I'll explain my confusion, so.
And sir, if you, if you'd, tell us who you are first.
Uh, Randy Palmer.
Randy Palmer, thank you.
So I have this staff analysis and it says that my case was twenty-two thirty-three. So when you mentioned twenty-two thirty-three, that's why I questioned it.
Oh, and you're right, we probably aren't, we've got it, I see it as both, I see it both ways, I see it both ways.
And then you were talking about divisions, so I knew.
Sorry, yeah.
I just, you know.
Okay, we, we-
I wasn't being excited or-
No, no, that's okay. We're talking about nine thirty-seven West Beecher Street regardless of the case number.
Yes, that's correct, okay.
Mr. Palmer, if you'd give us a brief thumbnail sketch of what it is you're proposing to do.
Well, I'm, I'm looking for a zoning exception permit and a site plan review tonight, I guess. And what I'm doing is I am adding to, uh, I'm adding storage unit buildings behind my, behind ProMed uniform. Um, and it's in addition to the current storage unit buildings that I have, which are AA storage.
AA storage?
AA storage is also mine.
Oh, that's the company?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But these are going behind ProMed and so we're combining a piece of ProMed's property with AA storage. And we're building those buildings on that property.
And have you already combined those lots?
I'm working on it right now.
Okay.
And I've been told that there's not going to be any issues doing any of that.
I do have preapproval from, uh, Kristen.
Okay.
That, that will go through on the assessors end, but that's not until January that those happen.
Okay, now the, the diagram I'm looking at, we've got three existing storage buildings.
Three existing, correct.
And I see one, one new building.
There is one, and the reason there is one is because when I first started this program, or this, uh, we were only going to build one.
Okay.
Um, once I started putting the project together, this building is smaller than the existing buildings, so the, the ones on AA storage right now are thirty by one fifty. Originally, we were gonna build a thirty by one fifty, so I got all the material list and prices for a thirty by one fifty. Well, then we figured it was a better way to run, we're running the buildings a different direction, so they'll be in line with the current buildings. Well, we can only do an eighty-foot building.
Okay.
So what I found is for material costs, two thirty by eighties are about the same cost as that thirty by one fifty, so.
But the diagram I'm looking at only shows one new building. And so the, so the second, so, yeah, so which one is going to be?
The south, the southern, the southmost building.
Okay, okay, I'll pencil that in here.
So, so what I'm looking for also with this, because we changed that, is it does say in here that this isn't granting the future buildings.
Right.
Right, but I'd like to move forward, cause I'd like to build two right now.
Okay, well, we could consider that. We, we won't consider three.
You won't consider three for future, future, so we could consider two and then the third in the future? Is that what you-
That's what I was saying, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
Um.
What precludes this from?
Approving.
Of all three, yeah.
Well, let's, let's wait till we're done with the discussion, then maybe, 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 maybe we'll, maybe we can, maybe we can.
I was wondering that myself.
Yeah. Um, is there lighting for, on these buildings? Is there like security lighting here?
There's current lighting on, uh, what's there right now. And there is, right on the property line, there is light right there.
Cause we're, 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 one of the requirements of a site plan is to see the lighting plan, and I don't see that here.
Um, I guess we didn't know if we had to do it.
Yeah. Um.
There is lighting there now.
Uh-huh, and I presume there'll be additional lighting for the new buildings.
If there has to be, yeah.
Well, uh, yeah, I, if I was gonna rent a storage unit, I want there to be some lighting.
Well, there's lighting in the back, in the, in the, the back corner of, of the existing ones, and there's one right in the center. And those will be on the new buildings. It's and then there's also lighting at the back of ProMed.
Well, it says there'll be a, that we'll, that will, that the site plan will have a lighting. I'm not sure there's a-
I think it's the opposite, that, you know, if, if there, it's lighting proposed, it can't spill over the property line. And so the reason that you want to review the photometric plan and so you know it doesn't spill over onto the neighboring property.
Mm-hmm. Um, I also, also, a site plan review, we usually say a landscape plan.
Um, yeah, I, I wasn't aware of the landscape plan.
Um, because, uh, our ordinance does require that fifteen percent of the property be in landscaping.
So what, what I'll say about that is, um, where these prop, where these are situated. Currently, the ones that are situated right now, there is no landscaping on those.
Yeah.
Um, they are, they're barely visible from Beecher. Because they're behind ProMed and my other building, the Deal King. Um, and on the back of the lot, there's privacy fence all the way along that, so current ones I have right now, there's, there's no landscaping, it's-
I know.
I'm not aware of much landscaping at any of those storage places, but I may be wrong about that. I mean, I don't know if it's a requirement or not.
Well, it is a requirement. It is a requirement.
Well, I guess we didn't require it when you built E3. I mean, I was around when we did that.
Mm-hmm.
Does the requirement, like, I mean, does it say like if it's visible from a certain area or something? Adjacent properties?
Mm-hmm, you know, shrubberies and stuff, so that, like, there's not gravel dust and stuff like that going over to the adjacent properties and-
Just a general, any, any commercial industrial site to be fifteen percent lands, you know, in landscape, fifteen percent of the, the overall area of the site.
Uh, and like I said, my concern is two, twofold. Usually when we see a site plan, we see both a lighting plan and a landscaping plan to go with it. Yeah, um, and I don't see either of those with this. Um, I'm not opposed to building two new storage facilities here, but, uh, again, before we'd approved the site plan, that, that's something that we all, you know, that is kind of, we need to see, we need to see.
Okay.
Is, that's easy enough. Does the landscaping requirement also able to go through the ZBA?
No.
Well, I mean, one, one could request.
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah, one, one could ask for that. It would be in the nature of a dimensional variance, but, um, you know, absent that having been granted. Right. Uh, you would need to see it at this stage. Landscape plans can come back later, but the current plan, as it's drawn, you know, precludes there from being any landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, two of the other things that need to be discussed, that the staff report brought out. The fact that, uh, this is proposed to be gravelled, now the, the normal rule is that all, uh, parking lots have to be paved.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you, you can waive that, if you, that's within your discretion as planning commission to waive. Uh, but you have to give that issue some consideration and then, um, we pointed out also that there's really no, there's no parking plan here either.
Yeah.
Even if you conclude that there would be parking place in front of each door, which is typical for these kind of uses. Uh, the width between the buildings does, these are double-sided, right? There's doors on each side of the building, and so the width between the buildings doesn't allow you know, people more, yeah, more than one, uh, it's not wide enough between the buildings. There's not, no, it, let me finish. If, even if you park parallel in, uh, adjacent to the buildings, the width there uh, is not sufficient for a drive aisle, uh, as between the buildings, if you consider that people might be parked at both sides of that aisle.
Of course, that, Greg, that's, we also have three existing buildings in that circumstance.
Oh, I understand that, but that's not a reason to repeat it.
No.
Review it going forward.
No.
So just to be clear, so we're not looking at changing or correcting the existing buildings and parking and the existing gravel. We're just going to look at what's the future supposed to look like, correct?
Right, all you're, all you're reviewing is the, the post parcel on the left.
Right.
Right, which is the proposed new building and/or buildings, as the case may be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, that would be in addition to the, uh, uh, existing, uh, facility, uh, to the, uh, east.
So my secondary question then is, since landscape has to be fifteen percent of the property, are we considering the fifteen percent of the entire property or fifteen percent of just the two new building areas?
Well, so that's an interesting question. So now you're really considering the site as reconfigured, right? So now you've got a combination happening, and so the, the parcel that you're considering now is the parcel where those- And so the, the parcel that you're considering now is the parcel where those existing buildings are located, and so that parcel, uh, is y- y- that would be the parcel that you're looking at in terms of, uh, does it meet the landscape requirements, right, it's fifteen percent of that newly configured.
The newly configured area.
Um.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, of the property.
So I'd like to understand the parking, the parking issue, uh, I'm not real sure, are you saying that people can't park and, and, and get to their units if they're parked in parallel, we need to be able to go in between them? Or you don't think there's enough space for them to park on each side?
There's not enough space for them to park on each side, and then, and then for another car to come through.
So if I have a car here and a car here, I need space to go in between?
That would be the desirable way, you know, folks, part of me says that, that there's three existing buildings here, we're not gonna ask, I can't see us asking Mister Palmer to move or change those in any way, shape or form.
So.
It also, as much as I would, a- a- and I do wanna see some kinda landscaping on it, uh, just for, for the, the public appearance of the space, um. But it's also, on the other hand, it's also not particularly visible to the public. It's, it's well hidden, it's way back from the road, it's behind two other buil-, three other buildings.
Uh, privacy fence along the whole south border.
Yeah.
Um, the west border, which borders Aider Mechanical.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's an empty lot, there's just grass, Todd doesn't have anything, that, I mean.
Well, so, so the, so, excuse us for a minute while we talk about.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, uh, kinda the issues as I see them are, are, uh, gravel parking lot, uh, requirement is that it would be paved, um, but again, the other existing part is gravel, it, it's well removed from the public eye. Um, the other one is landscaping, do we wanna require any landscaping? I would suggest we do wanna see a, a, a lighting plan, and if there is landscaping, we wanna see a landscaping there. But the other, but like I said, the question is, is do we wanna require those?
Mr. Watson? My, my feeling is, we do need a lighting plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The gravel, I don't have a problem with, but I do have a problem with landscaping, if we need to require something, because there's been a lot of problems in this town that we haven't set that precedent that.
Yeah.
Do.
Meaning, make it look good.
Need to make it look.
Mm-hmm.
Even though it's way off the road. It, it's.
At least the entryway and, and something along the borders.
There needs to be some.
Mm-hmm.
In my, my.
Looking at this parcel, um, obviously you could do some landscaping on the south edge, which would do nothing at all.
Right.
Because you've got the privacy fence, so, you know, you know, it's just money down the sewer.
Right.
I mean, there might be a little bit of space along the, the northern edge of that property.
Or on either side, depending, again, depending on how, how, how the.
The traffic pattern.
Sign lights, uh, sightlines are.
I mean, you know, you can, you can use a lot of different stuff to landscape, I mean, you don't have to have, you know, fifty feet by hundred feet necessarily, you could have a, well. I didn't get my degree in landscape architecture, so I'm not quite sure, but, you know.
How would we feel about asking, uh, Mister Palmer to come back with both a landscape and a lighting plan? Um, if we're, are we comfortable leaving the parking lot in gravel?
I think there's a bit of concern there, I think first of all, it's a requirement to, to pay a parking lots, and I think there is just and sufficient reason for that to be, um, one of our rulings, and I think if it's a very dry, dusty, hot kind of summer, uh, and summer days, um, that's a, that's a good bit of, of gravel, um, and I think a lot of dust and whatever could be stirred up. Um, I think similarly about the, the, uh, the landscape.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I've owned them for about twelve years with the gravel, and I, I mean, I'm back there twice a day. Uh, there's never been a time where there's been dust kicked up whatsoever, it's, it's slag, it's just, I've just never seen it, or, and I've never had anybody say a thing about it, um, being the, the Hidden River behind it, or even customers or anything, I just, I mean, you, the speed is probably an issue, would be the issue, which people are going two miles an hour.
Right.
Yeah, your spaceship.
That was, that was gonna be my comment, I think.
Yeah, I just.
You drive around these things.
I'd be honest about it, if, if that had ever come up, and it just hasn't.
Well, when did you build the other, I mean, I remember when you came in and built three.
Well, I have to think, I think it was, you remember Mike?
Third one.
Within the last five years?
Years.
In the last five years?
So you had two and you added one, was that, or you did all three?
I'm sorry.
Did you do all three at the same time?
No, when, when I bought them, Tom Prang owned them.
Oh, that's right.
And I bought in, and there was two buildings there.
And you added a third?
Yep, and there was enough space, um, to that, that property line of nine twenty-three, that we put that building.
Have we just, have we changed our requirements in the last few years from gravel to asphalt, I mean, I, every, everyone I've gone to, you know, like, well, the, Qantas has their flags, you know, on, it's, it's gravel there as well.
Which one is that?
Well, I forget.
It's on US two twenty-three.
It's not in the city, yeah.
Oh, sorry, it's true. It's in Madison, yeah.
They're also way out of the city.
Yeah, okay. That's Madison. But I don't know.
Finding about it, uh, that, uh, that surface can spice in that circumstance and find that there is special provision for dust control. Cause we did do a similar allowance for the original proposal for the Marvin Farms marijuana build of, they were gonna keep theirs gravel.
Mm-hmm.
So, in this regard, I don't see this any different than that.
Well, and we've also, uh, not recently, but we've also discussed the desirability of having less impervious surface.
Sure.
And this is a good example where it works.
Mm-hmm. Cause it's not a high traffic.
It's not a high traffic area.
High traffic, well, right.
Yeah.
Folks, in order to move us forward on this, uh, would we, how would we feel about, uh, uh, referring this back to Mister Palmer, uh, with the request for, um, lighting plan? Photometric, photometric plan, a landscaping plan?
And a parking plan?
A, uh, uh, but with, with the, also with the understanding that we would consider approving this with a gravel parking lot, with, with the understanding and, and part of the, part of the approval would be that there would be, if, if necessary, there would be regular dust control for the parking, or for the, for the driveways. That was, that was just to get that on the table and to discuss that.
I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the gravel, I, I do feel we need to have some sort of landscaping.
And a photometric plan. Mister Johnson?
I agree.
Okay.
My question is, what about the parking?
Yeah.
Well, do we also wanna at least some proposed parking of some sort? But, I, I.
Well, there's no reason, there's no reason that those, those, the new buildings couldn't be spaced out.
Well, then they don't line up, and just keep them in line.
I, I think it looks better if they're aligned up. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, you want them to line up, I just like to see.
Especially trying to.
You wanna have, if there's.
I wanna have.
Yeah, you just made a good point, pulling a trailer through.
Oh, do you wanna go through?
Yeah, you're gonna want them straight.
Yep. Well, in the instance, it's, you know, Robert, we would, you know, sometimes say, show us where the parking spots are gonna be, but it's a gravel parking lot, they're not gonna be.
Right.
There's not gonna be lines and.
No, that's fine, I just.
May, may I add something on the, the alignment of the building?
In, in your name, sir?
Mike Capelletti, I'm the engineer.
Okay, Mike, please, Mister Capelletti, please go ahead.
We, we had discussed, uh, this with the fire, uh, the fire people had wanted.
Yeah.
Alignment, at one time, we were looking at actually going the other way with it, and they, they wanted the alignment with, with, uh, the existing building.
Makes sense, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and I do many of these storage units, and the twenty-five foot spacing for a thirty foot building is typical, so as far as parking and that kinda thing, uh, I've never had that issue come up.
Thank you. Commissioners? Um.
Uh, one other thing.
Yes.
If, since he's gonna need to come back, should he, should he plop the other two on this and just get it done with?
Yes.
Doesn't require you to build, but it'll just be done with.
Anything proposed should be on there, um, no changes last minute or anything.
So, so, bring the city new plans that show all proposed buildings, photometric plan in a landscaping plan, and we will give it consideration.
About the landscaping plan, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out where, where are you, where, where do I need to put that? I mean.
If it were me, I would.
From, along, behind ProMed, you, you can't see that, you got ProMed's building, which is a hundred and some feet, and from Beecher, and then you got, you know, the, the Deal King lot over here with the, their cars, and then you got the Deal Kings, you literally can't see from, you know, the north looking back, so do I have to?
Greatest proposal that shows sign landscape.
I just wanna make sure it's right, if you're.
What I would say is for future developments, we care about this, because if we have canopy trees in there, and let's say you decide to move on and someone knocks that down, we have canopy trees in place, or things of that, just saying, ju- just giving a reason why we want that, so if you put it to the north, it's possible that eventually, let's say somebody knocks those down twenty years from now, and we have some canopy trees out there.
So.
The, the reason for the landscaping isn't only to see it, right?
Well, I, I wanna make sure that the plan's, the plan's correct when I come back.
Yeah.
And are you proposing I go around the west, north, and east borders?
We, we don't have a proposal, as Chair said, uh, we want you to propose something that is compliant with the ordinance.
Do I have to do something at the south end where the privacy fence is?
I would suggest not, but we, we wanna see a proposal that shows some landscaping.
Well, that space behind you, that's the whole area on the south side there is all gravel, right? Yeah, that's a significant area, right?
It, yeah.
I mean, I understand if you put landscaping there, who's gonna see it, but.
You know, I.
That's the biggest area where you could put it in.
And that's, that's currently on the current, is the current, uh, storage buildings, that south line is outside storage.
That's why, I, I, I mean, I, I am not an architect, landscape architect, but I would recommend putting something, trees, deciduous or canopy along the, the, the north fence. And, you know, that, that's what we're, we're not looking for flower beds and rock landscapes and mulch, it's, it's, it's hard for people to understand that thirty years down the road, somebody might come to you and be like, here's twenty million bucks, go away, or a hundred million bucks, and you're okay, and they wipe it clean, and then, but they just want the storage units, and it's gonna look nice then. And that's what we have to think about is down the road, you know, right now, yes, you're right, all the cars, the buildings, you can't see it, but that car lot goes away, they knock that building down, and then it's all exposed to the world, and that's what we're, we have, we have kinda set the precedent lately, that this is, we're going to follow the ordinance and move forward in that direction, and that unfortunately, or fortunately, is painful for some people, and they, we've had other people that are like, yeah.
It, it is painful, and, and I'm just trying to make sense of it, and how it, it works into everything, and, you know, I'm listening to what you're saying, but I've had that property for over twenty-some years now, and to put trees or these, or bushes or whatever, where they're proposing for the reason they're proposing, I just, I know. But if that's what I gotta do, that's what I gotta do, I mean, I don't think anything's gonna grow there, but, uh, but because I have to draw that plan up, I just wanted to know where it needed to be, and the southmost end of the existing storage units, those are outside storage units, there's cars parked up, I can't, you know? I, I can't put it there, I'll, I'll lose all those, those places.
I didn't realize that was outside storage.
It is outside, it, yeah.
In the ordinance that says where, it just says you have to have X number of.
Man, so much, so much area and landscape.
Fifteen percent, I think you said, and I'm trying to calculate that with the square footage of this whole thing, and how much that's gonna take up, which that's fine, but, um.
And they don't have to all be together, like, it, we've had them where they come and.
And spread them out.
They've spread them out in a field next door to the big building, cuz it's like, you gotta put so many trees in, and they're like, okay, this is gonna be a new forest.
It's strangely enough, uh, a couple years ago, Hidden River, they had to cut down all the trees that were on my property line, or that were on their property line right on the other side of the fence, cuz the branches were coming over top of all my stored stuff, so, shoot, up they went and took, they took a whole bunch out, so, uh.
Okay, folks, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna see if there's any other public comment on this, and then I'll entertain a motion to table this, uh, with the idea.
Then you can get back to us, right?
Then you'll get back to us with, uh, with the stuff we've requested, so.
So the lighting plan, I have to do a study, do you know, how do I?
A photometric, photometric plan, and a landscaping plan.
Who do I get to do that, and, I mean.
Yeah, your, your engineer will know.
Mm-hmm. It just says how, it's so you don't put a big old light in the corner, and everybody in Hidden River can't go to bed.
They're already there. That's why.
But that's, we need.
That's what we need to see.
Hear that out, if you're good, that's what we need.
Yeah, well, I, I understand that currently, there's already two there.
Yeah, well, we need to see that to show.
Yeah, and then show those.
Show those existing, that's, I'm not requiring you to put more, we're just saying we need to see the lights that are there.
Okay.
Or any new ones that you're gonna put on.
And the ones that you're putting there don't immediately impede on.
Yeah.
The, the neighbors.
Okay, cuz I assume you're gonna put new lighting on your new bill, or lights on your new building somewhere.
Uh, I was gonna do them just like the ones that are currently built.
We need to see that.
Which are just poles, they're just poles with lights.
Show us on a plan, show us a plan.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna have to put ProMeds in there.
Yep.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to comment on the site plan review, or the, uh, zoning exception permit application? Anybody, uh, online? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion to table this item.
Don't move.
The part.
We have a motion in support to table, all those in favor, please indicate, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, oh, let me oppose, thank, thank you, Mister Roberts.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is case twenty-two thirty-seven, discussion of the Sidewalk Cafe ordinance amendment, as you may recall from our last discussion, our last meeting, uh, we discussed, uh, the distance requirements for the ADA, and our ordinance had specified four feet, in our discussion, we came to the conclusion that we were better off simply making reference to the ADA. Jeremiah has provided us with language to that effect, uh, paragraph, what is it? Now, shows that, again, like our other, uh, discussions this evening, this would be in the form of a recommendation to the City Commission to adopt this into the, into the ordinance. Commissioners, any discussion on this? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission in this particular matter? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for approval to recommend this change to the City Commission, I didn't, I didn't see a, uh.
Move to approve.
Support.
Or, motion in support from Commissioner Love and Commissioner Taylor, I believe it was, any additional discussion? Jeremiah?
Love?
Yes.
Leatherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Watson?
Support.
Chokovitz?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Taylor?
Support.
Motion passing names.
Thank you. There any other business to come before us this evening? Is there anybody in the audience, either in person or online, that wishes to address the planning commission? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Watson, Johnson, thank you all very much. We will see you on October fourth. Mrs. Leatherby will not be here, I realize, uh, generally, will we all be here on October fourth, the rest of us be here on October fourth?
Depends on the offer, we got, for, something else.
So I'll see you on October fourth, okay? Oh, okay, well, we'll, we'll know better, if we're gonna, if we're not gonna have a call, okay, thank you, Robert, appreciate that. Thank you all.